Call order, the city council work session for the CDV's Grand Forks Tuesday, February 14th, 2023. City clerk, please call roll.
May I receive Gander?
Here.
Council President Hank Goldstead?
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Reince?
Here.
Council Mayor Sturz?
Here.
Ben Tucker?
Here.
Dale Holmes?
Here.
Brian Larson?
Here.
Karen Evers?
Here.
Does turn. Current number one, Pierce Investments LLC loan request. Mr. Gardi.
Pierce Investments, who owns Dakota Pete and Hawks Manufacturing, is buying two pieces of equipment, two laser pieces of equipment to help in their supply chain issues. The laser piece of equipment costs about $1 million. In order to accommodate that expansion, they need to add in a 7,000 square foot addition to their existing facility. That, the facility will cost an estimated $600,000. They are asking for a loan from the EDA of $149,900, which is approximately 25% of the estimated construction cost for the building. They expect to have the building completed later this, in late spring, so they can address their issues, purchase, supply chain issues. EDA recommended approval today of a 10-year loan of $149,900 at 1% interest because it's the policy for a primary business in town. I think that covers it. And Kevin is here in case you have any questions for him.
Anybody have any questions?
That's the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Gardi. If no one else has any questions, we'll move on. All right, move on. Number two, consider rental of Civic Center for Grand Craft Beer Tour. Reed.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President, council members. Leighton Broadcasting is interested in hosting their Grand Craft Beer Tour at the Civic Center again. They've held this event a couple of times in the past with really no issues. By all accounts, been a really good event for us. If you all recall, last summer, there was plans for them to host this event and in conjunction have a country music act come in for kind of a larger scale concert that would be ticketed with beer sales. They are not planning at this time to move forward with an event of that nature, so this would just be kind of the beer sampling event that they've had in previous years. They may try to find a solo act, to set up a small stage and kind of strum a guitar and sing a solo act as the beer sampling event is going on to add a little bit more ambiance and energy to the arena, but no large act that would require a big turnover of the building with glass and all the extra work that we talked about last summer. So just requesting moving forward with that facility use agreement.
Anybody have any questions for Reed? Mr. Larson.
I guess more for the chief. Have we had any issues at this event with alcohol in the past?
No, from law enforcement perspective.
Maybe else have anything? Thank you, sir. Move on to number three, review proposed 2023 summer recreation and swimming pool rates. Reed.
Thanks again, Mr. President. At our Park and Rec Commission meeting in January, we looked at our summer activity fees and swimming pool rates. Both of the income accounts in our 2023 annual budget, we budgeted for small increases in both of those areas for some additional income. And just in discussing the programs, the rates, and what we expect some of our expense increases to be on the expense side, largely cost of utilities and staffing at the facilities, we've proposed fee increases basically across all the activities and areas. So in the included information is what the 2022 rates were as well as what we're proposing for 2023, and certainly willing to answer any questions anyone would have.
Anybody have any questions for Reed? None, sir?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Number four, discussion on carbon reduction program projects. Ms. Ellison, Reed.
The state of Minnesota received some funds from the Infrastructure Act for carbon reduction projects. It's divided into two different types or scenarios, one for cities over 65,000, and then some for those who are involved in an MPO, and I gave you the letter that the MPO received that was included. So what we have been told, Reed and I, is that the city of East Grand Forks will receive approximately 20,000 for the next two years. That's what's been appropriated as just a two-year term for right now with an 80-20 split. So that gives us $40,000 with 8,000 as a local match that we'd have to provide. We can do them separately year by year, or we can combine them into one year and do maybe a larger project. So I included a couple of eligible projects. Because it's a quick timeline, we're mainly looking at bike ped projects and then a couple other data collection, some vehicle-to-vehicle, like autonomous vehicle type information. One that stood out to me was, and let me find it here, it involves the emitters that you can use for the fire department to, what it does is it preempts the light, and so then they can go through the lights. So Reed and I took a look at some of the projects that we had available, that we've maybe done some preliminary engineering on and received estimates, again because of the quick turnaround, and I provided those three. One is the connection over by the library that would connect Sherlock Playground around to where the campground is, and we already have an estimate and a drawing for that, and some engineered costs and plans. The second would be when visiting with the fire department, because they have to change, this would preempt the new MnDOT lights, their preemption emitters, and we have a cost. It's a little under 10,000. And then the third project would be the Bigland Bike Lane project. That's a pretty extensive project. We could probably pare that down with different types of striping, the paint, because I think some of it involved sharrows, and so there was more in-lane markings, a few more signage, but even if we were to cut it in half, it's still around 75,000. So it'd be a fairly large project. So I just presented those to you today. Just kind of want to get your input on where you think Reed and I should move forward with that application.
Mr. Larson.
Yeah, I guess if I was ranking them for this year's Carbon Reduction Act, I'd be in favor of that missing connection by Sherlock Park that we had talked about late last year. And then could you just clarify the cost estimate for that project? Is that 105,000?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so.
Nope. If you look...
I was looking at proposal number four. Maybe I had my numbers mixed up.
Yeah, no, it is, it's not the Sherlock Parkway. It's not the River Road Extension. I think it is, it could be that one on Fourth and Fifth, but that also included some sidewalk, which we didn't necessarily need. We could use some transit funds for that if necessary, but...
Well, I guess to finish my thought, I'd be in favor of that project for '23, and then I'm strongly in favor of continuing to scope out a project for bike lanes on Bigland Road. And to give us some more time, maybe we could look at 2024, and the Carbon Reduction Act could be one of the funding sources while we continue to look for other opportunities through state dollars.
That's what I was going to say. The bike lane one is a better project for like, in my thought process, for the Transportation Alternatives grant, because that one starts at 50,000, and you can request up to whatever that amount is in an 80-20 split, whereas I think this one is just going to be a set amount, a smaller amount. Plus, if we were to, if we were to apply for the carbon emission for the bike lane, we can't double up with another federal grant. It would have to be something that would be like, more like local dollars, like state aid or something similar to that. So we couldn't really tap into the Transportation Alternative Funds and this fund at the same time. So it's kind of where you want to get your money from, but I think our better bet with the bike lanes is to try to do something through a different sort of program, so we can ask for as much funds as we want to, rather than try to pull from a couple of different ones and then do this project and the preemptive emitters, because part of this project we can use state aid dollars for or Greenway Trail Funds, which are local dollars, so they can match without having to come out of the general fund. And then that also gives Jeff what he needs, because we've been trying to find funds for that, and that would be a good one to just include with this and try to combine the two together and see if we could get both of the amounts for 2023, like the, upload the 2024 into this year. So we would combine the two and apply for both in one grant.
Sure.
And take the two years' worth of dollars.
You know, sir? Reed, do you have something?
I think I want to jump in on that, Nancy, maybe to clarify a little bit, at least in my thought process, Brian, to your point. We're talking about this $20,000 being available to us in '23 and '24 each year subsequently. If we were going to go forward with like the Sherlock Trail Connection project in '23, is what your idea was, we don't have any other local match available in '23. All the ADA projects are already committed for the year, and we left this piece of it out because we didn't have enough funding to do it. So to me, if we're going to go forward with an idea like that, we'd be, in my view, we'd wait until '24 to do it and then commit. The rest of our city responsibility would need to come out of that ADA plan in '24's dollars, unless we want to, you know, dip into reserve-type funds to be able to come up with it. The Greenway dollars, that account is still in a deficit. It may be close to back to zero, but we spent into a deficit on it when we did the trail overlay two summers ago now, and need to let that regrow itself before the next project planned with those dollars is 2025 is the next time we're planning a project with those dollars. So I don't know if we'd want to necessarily go spend back into a deficit in that account, and then we're behind on our Greenway maintenance in '25.
So I think what we can do then, after visiting with Stephanie, is we could apply for the preemptive emitters for the fire trucks with the lights this year, enroll the remaining funds from that into 2024, and then in 2024, we could ask for the trail and use maybe some ADA dollars with that. And so then that would be able, we would be able to budget that, so we could use whatever is remaining of those carbon emission funds. So we want to kind of maximize our dollars without coming up with a different project, and that might be the best way to do it without going in the hole for our Greenway maintenance funds and our ADA. So we could always do that as well, so.
Sure. Anybody else have anything, questions? Right now, you're recommending maybe do the emitters, and then '24, we do the Sherlock Park connection.
Yep, flip-flop it.
Yep, I mean, that's...
Sure.
Anybody else have anything? I see nothing, ma'am. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, everyone.
Request to consider creation of new position on the police department. Chief Headland.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a little bit out of the box for, at least in this area. We're looking, we've just, we've talked about, continually talked about trying to find different ways to attract people to our department, and this is one that some of our staff came up with, looking at creating essentially a police recruit position. The person would, in reality, would not be doing any work for the city for this position. We would be paying them a stipend, whatever, however we ultimately came up with it, whatever we decided on, while they're concluding their schooling. For law enforcement, if you're going through a two-year program, typically by the time you graduate in May, you've done everything you need to do in your two-year program, and you're ready to go, you're ready to take the post test and be licensed. If you're a four-year student, you typically would graduate in May, and you would still have to go to the skills training, which is a 10-week program during the course of the summer. So the proposal would be that we would, could hire somebody anytime during that last semester of their two-year degree program, or for their 10-week skills program in the course of the summer if they're a four-year law enforcement prospective employee. Essentially, we're just trying to get our hands on these folks before they're committed to other agencies, trying to make it a little bit more attractive for us to bring in some of these people that are fresh out of school. I am wide open to what we would do, whether it be a full-time employee, a part-time employee, benefited, unbenefited. It would be a very short-term employee, because once they've completed their education and once they took the skills test, the plan would be for them to be, start almost immediately as a police officer at that point in time.
Mr. Reed.
Quick question. So after they complete the education, they're required to join us?
Yes, that would be, that would be my opinion, that there would be an agreement that essentially they would be hired as the police recruit with a conditional job offer, that we would then hire them as a police officer and upon the completion of their education and their completion, their successful passing of the post test, along with, we would probably do, well, we would do a background before we ever even did that initial hire as the police recruit, as I've been calling it. And then we would probably have to do another background just to cover that time period while they were finishing up their education to make sure nothing had occurred during that time that would preclude them from being hired.
They have a six-month period still afterwards, though, where...
As a police officer, you have a one-year probation.
A one-year probation, okay. What if they would bail out on it? What if they wanted to...
I guess that's where I would call and hopefully get Mr. Goldstead to help us out and try to draft some type of agreement that if they were to either fail or wash out, they would at least have to pay back the portion that they were paid during that educational period. Once they're hired as an official police officer, if they don't complete their training, it'd be just like anybody else, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have to pay that portion back, but I think it would be only fair that they would have to pay back that portion that they were paid during the course of their training. Mr. Goldstead, at our department meeting yesterday, recommended that I contact LALS just to get their thoughts. I did speak to Sergeant Shraga about this, and I've spoken just in general with a number of our officers, but Sergeant Shraga specifically stated he was in favor of it. They haven't done a formal vote or anything, but the general consensus of people I've spoken to is that they would be in favor of this idea. And that question that you just raised is something that he brought up. He also had the concern, if we hire this person and it turns out they're not what we thought they were going to be, they didn't turn out to be as effective an officer as we were hoping, how do we handle that? You know, are we going to just be stuck with them? And I would, unfortunately, it could be mildly expensive. It's always expensive if you wind up having to, you know, wash somebody out during the program, because training is expensive. But I would say we would have to still stick to our standards, and if they're not meeting, you know, meeting our requirements, they would have to be still let go. And if that's the case, then I think we would just be eating it.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Then I'll go to the mayor after I have my question.
With this six, this time period when they're still in school, what, I guess, would they be like a whole harmless with them from the city that if something did happen, or what are they actually going to be able to do for us?
And I guess that's my question, how would it be set up? And I guess my biggest thing would be our liability for them coming on. I think it'd be great that we'd have somebody coming on, but I just want to make sure that we're covering our own, you know, behinds, because if something does happen and they're here, you know, I don't know, would they be riding with somebody, or they'd be just sitting in the office working on stuff? I guess that's, you know, it's my worry.
Yeah. My actual plan would be to not necessarily have them do anything. I guess I would hope that they would be interested in coming in and doing some ride-alongs, but essentially whatever we agreed to pay them would essentially just pay them to complete their education, and then, under the agreement, that they would then come to work for us when that was done. So we might still want to have something like that in place. It would probably make sense if they are going to be considered an employee in any manner. But I don't, and I'm open to other ideas. I like your idea of the ride-alongs. I hadn't in these initial stages planned on them doing any actual work for the PD. It would essentially just be paying them to complete that education.
So like a scholarship?
Kind of, yep.
Well, this just came up, and we had a brief conversation during the staff meeting, and since it was in the preliminary stages, it was kind of an idea that we're floating around. Chief Headland wanted more to bring it to this group to decide, to see if there was any interest in it, and if there was, we would sit down together and put together some type of a more formalized program. I haven't had a whole lot of time to look at it. The other question and that I needed to look at was part-time employment, how it works, how it works with the timing and the length of time, just for other landmines that we might be running into with this type of a thing. I think it's a great out-of-the-box idea. I'm pretty sure we could work something out. It's just going to take a little bit of planning and discussion and to put it all together. And I would take into consideration your concerns, and we could frame it as something different. It might be able to be framed as...
What Mr. Pachivinsky just indicated, some type of a scholarship program that could be paid back rather than so-called an employment arrangement, and then we work on it that way so that we're not actually employing somebody at the time, but we can tie everything in with payback or whatever if there was, they weren't hired.
I guess you could go on the line of looking at it as a paid internship, basically. It's, you know, could be something that, but my thing is, if we're going to be looking at somebody and paying them whatever for the discussion, I would want them to have the buy-in and be able to be, know the department, get to know everybody and learn everything, even though they're still going to school. I think that's, you know, having them be there, then all of a sudden they're done, then they finally come in and get to know everybody and get to know the department. I think it's, it's a long shot that they're going to come in and go, yeah, I do, I, you know...
Good. I think that's a great idea, and you're correct. I think it would actually have them that much better prepared to walk in when they are hired as the police officer and be that much more effective, that much more quickly.
I think some of it just becomes a timing issue on schooling and training, and if they're even local at the time.
Karen, I'll come to you next. The mayor's going to...
Well, I was going to ask what the nature of the work would be, and that was before I came to the understanding that there wouldn't necessarily be formal work, and yet I do like the idea that they would spend time amongst our other officers and other staff over there as they get up to speed and ultimately be part of our police force. So how you could manage that, I like the idea that it could be a scholarship, or maybe, like you said, a paid internship, and, but it wouldn't have to be a big requirement, because I'm sure as they push toward graduation, 20 hours a week might be a bit much for them, but five or 10, I'm sure would be doable against everything else.
Yeah, it would, I think it'd be fairly simple to require them to put in X amount of hours during the course of that semester to do ride-alongs, for example. Skills, let's just use Alexandria, for example, where you're, you know, 150 miles away, 180 miles away, might be a little bit difficult for them, because sometimes their training even goes into the weekends, but we could, you know, we could kind of have it flexible and, you know, maybe tailor it per individual as well.
This might become something that you work with them and create something with them also, that'd be part of their program, so that they would carve out during their time training and going to school that, A, they're also going out and being part of a department.
Yep.
So it's maybe a hybrid thing that, you know, Alexandria can look at and work with, you know, our department.
Absolutely.
You have thoughts? Karen, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I was thinking along the lines of, what is the criteria for the person that you're going to hire in regards to, you know, are you going to offer this to everyone? Are you going to offer it, try to offer it to somebody local?
No, it would be, we would advertise and we would recruit at the various colleges, and in my mind, anyway, we would treat it just like a regular hiring process for police officer, and we would pick the people that we felt were the best candidates. You would hope if they're putting in for this, they would be serious about our department, and would be people that we'd say, right now, we have two openings, so if that were the case at that time, top two people, you're the two that we're interested in, you're the two we're going to move forward on background and all the other various steps that we would take normally before we hire somebody, complete all those things, hire them in either as paid intern, police recruit, whatever, however we wind up doing this, and then finalize the final steps of their hiring with the conditional job offer at that point in time, and then, once they're all done and pass their post test, actually bring them on board. But it wouldn't be, and it would be only for as many positions as we had open, or conceivably anticipated opening, like, for example, we have an employee that's, hasn't given us a final date, but he's planning to retire this summer. So maybe we would consider bringing somebody on for that spot, just so you have them in the mix and you're able to plug them in a little bit quicker.
So I do like the idea of doing some ride-alongs, just because you're creating that sense of community with that student. The other thing that I maybe wanted to ask a little bit is, do other facilities currently do this, and could we piggyback off of some of those things that they already do? And I know, for instance, in the profession that I work in, there's a huge critical shortage, that type of thing. The one idea that they've never been able to wrap their mind around or grasp is the idea of growing their own. Is that something that you have ever attempted to do, where you have, instead of trying to recruit somebody from another community to become part of ours, which is great, I don't disagree with that, but you do have a lot of community members who might be interested in, and could we develop somewhat of a program from that avenue?
We haven't at this point in time. There are a number of law enforcement agencies in the Twin Cities that basically have a conglomerate and essentially a training consortium amongst their departments, where they do their own academy, which is much like the skills program, that anybody that completes their college education for, in law enforcement can go do. They do it amongst themselves, and they have their own instructors. It is state-certified. Because of our location, we're not able to take part in that. So the grow-your-own, if, you know, we try that a little bit as being a member of, we have an explorers group that we're combined with the Grand Forks Police Department on. That's a bit of your trying to enhance interest in law enforcement with students, both high school and in college, but it hasn't reached the full grab them on, you know, early on, and potentially, I guess this is kind of a step in that direction. If you're going to do the true grow-your-own, you'd be paying for their entire education, and in Minnesota, that's a minimum of two years, which is, that's a...
Dropping the bucket, though.
Well, I don't disagree, but compared to what we've done in the past, it's a big commitment. But if it's a good enough person, yeah. Has it been done elsewhere? It's certainly been done elsewhere in other states. When I was hired by the Grand Forks Police Department, I was not North Dakota certified. They hired me and sent me to Bismarck. My first day on the job was, I was being paid and on the clock as I was driving to Bismarck to start the academy. I was paid full salary and benefits for the seven weeks. At that point in time, it was a seven-week academy, and that was quite a few years ago. So it's not like it's, hasn't been done other places. The only department I've heard of in Minnesota that's doing it is St. Cloud. I have been online looking at their hiring information, and that was just anecdotal that they were doing it. I did not see anything on their city website that indicated that. They had advertisements and job openings for regular police officers. I did not see anything that appeared to be this. I intend to call them. I just have not gotten that far yet, but the off chance that they are doing it, it would be great to get some additional information, find somebody that's currently doing it in Minnesota, because our laws, and our post requirements certainly are different than other states.
Sure. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. President. Any idea what you think the dollar amount would be? I know in the packet, there was nothing there, but have you had any chance to think about that?
I talked to a number of our employees that are, you know, on the younger end of the spectrum, and just threw out the idea of what if we were to hire these people at 20 hours a week at $20 per hour? So they'd be getting basically $400 a week. So if you had somebody for the 10-week skills program, you're now looking at $4,000 would be the cost for that. If they were doing a full semester, finishing up that last semester of the two-year program, it would, of course, be a little bit longer. Now you're talking closer to 16, 18 weeks, so the price would go up.
Do you think you'd want to do more than one at a time, or...
I guess I would be looking to do as many as we, potentially as many as we had openings, and didn't have others, like, if we had a currently certified officer that we thought, that it applied, that we thought was going to be a good fit for our department, obviously we would plan and hope for that person to fill that role. But if we didn't have any applicants, which at the moment we do not, I'd be looking to fill as many openings. At the moment, that's two.
Sure.
One of my questions, too, that I have, how would this work with the civil service board? I think that's normally how we do everything. How would that work with them? And I guess this would be so different from what they're looking at from hiring a police officer, that, what criteria would they be looking at?
If we had enough...
Do they, this would have to go through there, correct, or not?
That's a really good question, and it really, it really depends on the format we went, that we would go on. If it's strictly, like, say, a scholarship-type thing, then it wouldn't. If it's an internship, we have had interns here at the city that, and they do not go through the civil service. So that's, it's a very good question, and it would really, in my opinion, depend on how we structure this. So that's something that we would have to do in conjunction with exploring.
Forward-thinking about doing this process, how we normally would do it, they, let's say, they're, let's say we're calling them interns. So when they get done, they're going to come... to come, get hired from us. Would they have to go through that process or do we don't have any of that? Or it would be just you do another background check and go from there? I, I want to make sure that-
Yeah.
-the board that does cover this area is well aware of what's going on and how it's going to be handled, rather than us running into issues down the road.
Absolutely.
And I think that's a good point. And I think that's something that we move forward with. And I would know, um, I think it's, yeah, we will, we will keep them apprised of this as, as this goes forward. Um, I would say with the civil service though, right now we don't have any applicants. Um, and typically when we get one applicant and for two positions, it's really just kind of a pass-through. I mean, as long as they meet the qualifications, the civil, yes. So I, um, I, I think it's, it's a very good point and it's one that needs to be explored. However, with, how this would be within the number of applicants, I don't know that it would be quite as big of an issue.
No, that's fine. Reason I bring it up, I, with the process working, let's say we move this thing forward and keep going, that process and that understanding of how this would work would have to be worked out with Mr. Goldsted also.
Yeah.
How it, the parameters in, to make sure that we're following everything that we have to follow that, you know.
Absolutely. We've never had part-time employees at the police department. We have one currently, but she went through our regular hiring process and with civil service included. Um, we have an agreement with the civil service board right now that as we get applicants, we don't have a, we're not doing a deadline. We're just, if, if we get an applicant comes in that, that meets our qualifications, they're forwarded to the civil service just for them to review and then they're forwarding them on. Unfortunately, we're not getting applicants at the moment, but hopefully that's going to change. Uh, that's a temporary situation that we, an agreement that we have with the civil service. Uh, if things get back closer to normal where we're, we're running a regular hiring process rather than a continual hiring process, um, we'll go back to, you know, involving the civil service, possibly having their interviews, for example. Um, I could see us, I could see this being more attractive where you maybe have a pool of eight to 10 people and then you might, you might want civil service to be involved and have their interviews. But again, it would probably depend on, um, how we title it. Is it an intern? Is it, is it the scholarship or is it, are they a city employee? If they're gonna, we're gonna call them a city employee, we would probably need to involve civil service in some capacity.
Well, I think the bigger issue on the civil service is you hire them a part-time employee, then now you're going to convert them over to a full-time employee and you just bypass the whole process.
Yes.
You have to do one dovetail it with them, possibly look at changing the civil service rules, the civil service, you know, uh, I'm sorry.
We can hear you, but other people can't.
Yeah. Uh, all I was going to just say is, is that we'd have to look at dovetailing it with the civil service rules so that we weren't bypassing and having them come as an intern or a part-time employee that doesn't have to go through civil service. And then all of a sudden they would become a, a full-time employee while happening to go through their process. So we'd have to look at, uh, working together with them, possibly modifying or amending our civil service rules to allow for it. Uh, and I'd have, it, it's just, uh, kind of spitballing right now. So we'll have to take a look at it closer, uh, to make sure that we're not violating in our-
And that's why we're here, here to go through, walk through and talk about all the parameters that we'd have to set up, just to make sure that we're doing this correctly. Cause civil service board is part of that process that-
Absolutely.
-we, we have gone through. And I don't want us to say whether we're doing this without them knowing what's going on and how we're going to do it, just so everybody's on the same page.
Yeah. Those are all good points. And, and from that perspective and, and the knowledge that we would need to have civil service approving these people in the long run, maybe we do have them in regardless of the situation involved right up front and, and get their approval of whoever is moving forward, uh, in the process, regardless of what we call-
And that's what, another thing, you have criteria that civil service looks at now.
Mm-hmm.
So what would be the criteria of having somebody that's going to be at the beginning? That's, I mean, so those are things that-
Yeah.
-you know, we have to look at.
In my mind, it would be the same criteria that we're using to hire a regular police officer. It's just that they haven't completed their education. So, but anything else-
I think it has to be more than that.
I'm sorry?
I personally think it has to be more than that.
I, I think that you need to, I think you need to maybe look at, which I hate this, but I think you need to look at GPA. I think you need to look at-
Those are all things we consider when we're, it, it, it wouldn't be just somebody applies and they automatically get it. Those are all things we consider when we interview people. So we would be viewing that in, in the same fashion here. I would still anticipate that we would conduct an interview. We would do, if, if they pass the interview and we think this person is somebody that we want to move on, uh, with, we, we do a background check. Uh, we contact their references. We contact their, their employers. Uh, I would still anticipate that we would do a full background check before these people would be in, brought on in whatever position. Cause if we're going to be bringing them on as a police officer, we want to know that they're going to be a fit.
And so instead of changing the whole process, do you offer just tuition reimbursement?
That's, that's the thing. I mean, I mean, that's why I'm bringing up civil services, all that we do the process now. Is that going to be the same thing? Cause it's, you know, do we have to do that or how, is there a different way to do this? I don't know.
Ben Pachivinsky, please. Go ahead.
Um, I don't know if tuition reimbursement is as enticing as getting paid upfront. I would, I would rather we, if we were to go forward with this, we pay them while they're in. Um, especially like as a student, if I'm getting $400, would you say a week or a month?
Well, a week based on just the $20 an hour, 20 hours a week.
Yeah.
But that's just a, just a throw in over.
So if I'm getting paid $40 a week or $400 a week, um, I might not have to, you know, work my other job as much. So I'm going to have more time to devote to my studies and they might eventually end up being a better candidate where if we do tuition reimbursement, they still have other things that they have to worry about. Um, and, you know, if we're, if we're paying them upfront, uh, we, we've got our teeth in them and they're kind of locked in where if we do tuition reimbursement, they get back out at any time and then we're back to square one.
Yeah.
Mayor?
I do believe we would want to do civil service on the very front end. If there's an implied movement from this program into employment, if that is the intention of both parties, and you're saying that straight up front.
Yes.
We would like to put you through a process where we know you well enough that unless something very unforeseen would happen, we want you part of our police force. And they're saying, we're going to commit today while in school unless something unforeseen happens to your police force. Then it only makes sense to, to take them right through the normal, uh, civil service hiring program on the front end. And I think your concern, it may not be in-depth enough, but the normal civil, civil service portion, that's complete. And then you go deeper yet on your interview and, and the rest of it. So you have to kind of pass through multiple filters. You know, civil service passes through some very good qualified candidates and then you, you know, in a normal time, you might get several candidates coming through of which you'll pick one or two out of several based upon your other criteria. So I guess for me, if this is going to make sense and if it, if it's an implied initiation of employment, civil service has to be right on the front end.
One other question I do have, how would the sign-on bonuses be worked with this person into? Cause that's part of it. Cause it's our agreement.
Yeah. I guess in my mind, this is a supplement to the sign-on bonus. So I, I think the combination of the two, I would, we're hopeful that the sign-on bonus by itself would be attractive enough to bring people in. To this point, it hasn't. Um, every time I read a law enforcement journal online or, or law enforcement-related publications, they're all everywhere across the country. They're, they're screaming for, for applicants. The number of, uh, departments that are on the Minnesota Post Board website, job site, it's, the numbers just keep going higher and higher. One of the officers mentioned last week, it was over 130 now. A few months ago it was about 100. Um, it, it just keeps getting harder to, to attract people and, and we're all just stealing from each other and we're struggling at this, stealing from each other. So in my mind, this, we're tapping those students that aren't in the market yet, hopefully getting our hands on them, um, and getting them to commit to us before they are even graduating and they're viewing it as, I'm getting some help with this in, in whatever capacity we go in, in my final period of my education. I have a job waiting for me. And then to boot, I'm going to get that little bump, not little, it's a significant bump with the, the hiring bonus-
Right.
-to help me start off my career as I'm, as I'm going to be making the transition to move to East Grant Forks.
And not to expand this in my thought process too, is what other departments that we do have, like Fire Department Chief Bushy, you know, they're, they're have issues getting people too. I mean, is this something that we look at in all our departments with Fire Department and Police? Um, you know, it's just a thought, cause you know, you're struggling. You know, you're reaching out to Wisconsin or wherever else, trying to get people. So that's, you know, another thought, cause.
I, I don't think there's a career field right now that isn't hurting for applicants, but I, I would still be willing to bet that law enforcement might have it the toughest right now.
I'm sure they are. Yeah. Mr. Eepel?
Has Chief Bushy been that nice to us that we want to just include him on this?
I was thinking we'd retrain some firefighters as police.
Yeah.
It's been tried before, usually not with great success. That, and I would, obviously would have to work the other way around.
No, that would be bad. We'd just move our problem to the next place.
Bill, do you have anything?
Uh, no, thank you. I've been listening. It's a very good conversation.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Bill, some of your thought processes on this? Do we want him to just keep moving forward and have him work with Goldsted on this or do some parameters and discussion more?
I'm just curious if perhaps the negotiations team or, or some other, one or two members of council would be interested in, in sitting down with myself and Mr. Goldsted or, or Mr. Murphy, whoever, just to try to flesh out what we think is going to be the best avenue to move forward? Or if he would just like us to work on that and bring another-
I think it'd be nice for you guys to see if there's something out there already that you can look at. There's a, maybe something that then get together. I, I think doing it right away with us would be not as fruitful because-
Sure.
And I would say, I would absolutely say, I want to be part of this, but if you ever want to pull me in for any part of it, I'm always available. Okay? Thank you.
I'm unfortunately going to be out of town at the next work session, but I'll shoot to have something at the work session four weeks from now. Try to have something in place by then.
Sounds good.
Do some additional digging, so.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Move on to number six, Down Payment Assistance Fund. Mr. Gordy.
City has funded 633 Down Payment Assistance Program. It contains over $200,000 in it. I've been here eight years and that time we've done.
We have done one loan. It, there are other, our alternative down payment assistance programs that are equally or more attractive to people. So they've been taking advantage of those. They're both, uh, from federal programs, state programs and HRA, the Northwest Minnesota multi-county HRA also has a program. And I am the, the chair of the board that, that looks at the loans, loan requests that they get, for example. Um, the city also has lots, many lots that are still there. And we're looking for ways to how we can reduce our costs for maintaining those lots and to, um, sell those lots at the earliest opportunity. Um, one way to do that, that we looked at is use the down payment assistance as a way to reduce the lot prices for those lots so that they might be even more attractive, particularly as inflation, as, as interest rates are higher right now. Uh, so the EDA has worked on, we've been discussing this for several months and came back and have recommended a program that would take the amount of money, 218,000 plus, divided by the 25 lots that it would be applied to, which comes to a lot reduction of $8,721 per lot. Uh, they also have proposed several things. Lots 10 and 11 and Block 2 of Waters Edge would be sold as one lot. Lot 11 is not very attractive. So we were thinking if the two of them were together, it becomes a premium lot. And the price after the discount is applied would be at $69,999. Uh, they want to make it clear that the two twin home lots that are remaining in Waters Edge 2nd are sold as twin home lots. This program would not apply to the large lot that's at the corner of River Road and 23rd. And it would not apply to Lot 6, Block 2 in Cooley View, which is the corner lot, because there were no specials ever applied to that lot. But this would be a way to use the money fruitfully to try to reduce our costs that we have to pay each year for mowing the lots and for the, paying the specials and for any other costs that we have to pay on those lots. And one of the things the EDA wanted the realtors to do is make sure that this program would be marketed. Attached to here was, uh, a list of what the price, lot prices would be after the program is imposed.
Do we have any questions? Mr. Gander?
I'm sure it came up in your conversation also. Um, it's been nice when something like this rolls out that somehow it applies to lots also sold by the private sector. And I don't hear that coming through here. And I just, just curious how you look at that and if there might be a way that we could, um, duplicate or do some other thing to make it also appealing for our folks to build on lots sold by private developers.
Well, these were city funds and this is a city issue dealing with city-owned lots. And that's why it was applied only to city-owned lots. The private sector gets to set the prices for their lots. And they can set the prices and in fact, they could take advantage of this opportunity and buy all of the city lots and take advantage of the reduced price. But it was done because it's a city lot and a city issue and city costs with city dollars.
Those are all good things. However, we are in, we'll say what it is. We're kind of in competition with the private sector. We don't like it. We wouldn't go back into it again. This is a post-flood remnant carried forward. And, um, and yet if there is, just, just always be mindful as we do these things of, uh, try to make it fair and equitable to someone trying to sell a lot in the private sector. We want to be appealing for people to come and do business and take bare land and, and plat it out. You know, as long as we have these, it's a little harder for a developer to come in and, and buy some bare land and, and break it into parcels and put in streets. And, um, so just, just let's kind of keep that in the front of our mind to some way balance that scale back to the private sector.
Well, if we eliminate our lots, we have land available that can be sold to the private sector as raw land that they could develop as well. And the, the purpose is to get us out of competition and to reduce our costs, particularly as we're discussing what our budgetary costs are.
It's all good. Yep. It's very important for us to, to clean out our inventory. They're beautiful lots. Somebody's going to really enjoy those. Um, let's do it in the most fair and equitable way that we can.
And how would you suggest?
Um, just so we, you know, if somebody wants to buy one of those other lots, I know we've had some down payment assistance and all these other programs. Let's make sure that we don't abolish those because those were a way to make it-
Okay.
-on par with private sector.
We still will be providing the property tax rebate that's available to all lots. There's also the landscaping program that will be available to all purchasers at all lots. So that is, that would not change. So that's still available to other lot, to anybody who buys lots inside the city.
Right on. And this, like you said, the down payment assistance hasn't been utilized all that much.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not like we're pulling out the rug on them. But just whenever something like this happens, I just, I always will say, let's make sure it's fair and equitable the best we can, uh, to, to be a city where people want to do business as developers also.
Well, this may in fact make it easier for the private sector to purchase these lots and turn around and, and build and sell on them at, at a profit as well.
Thanks.
And in that respect, that's, helps them considerably as well. It's an opportunity for them to take advantage.
Thank you.
Bill, has anything?
Thank you, sir. Number seven, mowing unbuilt properties and lots. Mr. Gordy?
It's time to renew our agreement with, uh, to mow the lawns and mow the, what I charitably called lawns, the unbuilt lots in, in particular in Waters Edge. Uh, we have had an agreement with a, a local businessman who has been mowing those lawns. He submitted an agreement when it came to the EDA, the discussion came about, that the city requires that grass and weeds be kept at no higher than six inches on lots where everything has been built. It's enforced by complaint. But the proposal was to cut the, the, uh, ground at, or cut the weeds and grass on the lots at Waters Edge at six inches and allow it to grow to 15 and then cut it again. Uh, that runs afoul of what our city regulations are and what the EDA talked about was creating a differential between lots that are not built and lots that have been built on. And this would be something that would be applied citywide. So everybody would be taking advantage of that or could take advantage of that. But this is a way that can reduce costs. If we were to try to, uh, mow the weeds and grass at it so that anytime it hits six inches, it would have to be cut, the car costs would, on my estimate is they would probably triple at least, or we would have to buy additional equipment or additional personnel to cut those lots. So this is a, this is a way, uh, since we don't get, we get Nancy one or two complaints per year.
On your lots?
Yeah, on the Reporters Edge.
Yeah. Every so often. Usually kind of at the beginning of the year.
So-
And then at the end.
This has not been an issue in the neighborhood. And when we do get something, I call the contractor- And when we do get something, I call the contractor up. He goes out and he whacks the weeds and the grass down to the height that they're supposed to be. So this would not be something that'd be a huge difference. It just would be a way to differentiate between areas where lots are built versus where lots are still potential.
How would you differentiate a completely platted and unbuilt area from, say, an infill lot? Say, a 50, 60, 70-foot older lot in the middle of a block? How would you differentiate those two? Or don't you, doesn't it matter?
Well, I would, I would think that this would apply to in both instances. But as I said, we end up applying it by complaint. And oftentimes, what I have found in my experience is that you can call someone up and say, "Cut your grass too." A lot of people will agree. Some don't, but some do.
But if we modify the ordinance, say that it's an unbuilt lot, then they would be in compliance at that height? So you could complain, and the answer is, "We're leaving it because we're in compliance with this new ordinance."
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Bill, did you have something, sir?
The only reason that we're here is this policy, it came to the EDA, and I indicated to the EDA, I had a hard time allowing them to enter into a contract and grant a policy that was basically on the face violating the grass and weed ordinance. And I just told Mr. Gordy that if it was going to be a policy of the EDA, and that's what we were going to allow our contractor to do, then it had to come to this group for a decision on whether or not we were going to modify our ordinance. And I haven't given it great thought on how we were going to differentiate it because up to this point, I didn't even know if this group was going to agree and whether or not we were going to just require, go forward like we have been. I'll just leave it at that.
Mr. Larson?
Yeah, and kind of speaking from the EDA perspective, the most important part of this, I think, to understand is the feedback from the company that's been mowing these lawns. They're saying that the grade is so unlevel, that there's construction debris out there, et cetera, that you're not going to get lower than six inches. Not, not with this company, you know? They'll say they'll cut them down to six and they'll let it grow up. But to say that the maximum is six, they're just being honest and saying, "You're not going to get that out there." I think that's what kind of leads us to where we are today is, and what can we do in reality? You know, can we take it to 12? 15 does seem tall, you know, 15-inch grass. I think I'd be complaining about my neighbors too. But I don't doubt that they're truthful in saying that getting it below six is just not going to happen. So that's why it's in our court.
And he also pointed out that weeds grow faster than the grass does, and it's the weeds that cause the biggest problem. If you cut the weeds down, everything, the weeds and the grass down more, the weeds will be the thing that you see first. You won't see the grass.
Repel.
The complaints have been so minimal though, correct?
Correct.
Do we really need to change the ordinance?
I just think it's the feedback from that quote, this contractor is saying, "I can't give you this. We'll do, we'll do a minimum of six, and then our ordinance says maximum of six." So something's got to budge.
I mean, we do, we do need to set the example too on what we're, what we're agreeing to. We can't purposely, purposefully ignore the ordinance when it harms us and what we're trying to do.
Would there be any way to differentiate and say, to the property adjacent to a developed property, it goes to one standard, and then the open area away from that could be different?
But we have that already out in Waters Edge because you have lots that are in between other lots that haven't been built on.
Yeah, that's my point.
And they have been going with the 15-inch maximum standard.
Yeah.
Without complaints too.
I guess my question's going to be is, what does it get changed to then? What's the proposal?
You'd have to drag it and you level it, and then you could mow it to that. I'm not saying you should do that, but that's what you'd have to do.
Are we going to use a Toro Gromaster out there?
Or you buy, we buy another lawn mower, and somebody goes out and mows all that property every week to keep it down to six inches so that it doesn't exceed six inches. We don't have the staff to do it. We're trying not to hire additional staff.
Do you have any idea, I'm sorry, how to reconcile these discrepancies?
No. I mean, at this point, realistically, you'd have to differentiate. Realistically, at this point, you'd have to differentiate between developed and undeveloped lots and then figure out on how you're going to do it. So yes, if there was an infill lot in a neighborhood that got up to, and you might want to reduce it to 12 inches because I think they could go to 12 inches.
Yeah.
But you'd have to somehow come up with a differentiation between the two. I don't think it works to say developed and undeveloped next to each other because you're still going to have the same issue if there's ruts and, you know, some type of minimal construction debris. You're not going to be able to do it even if it was next to somebody's constructed house. So I'm not horticulturist, nor am I a landscaper, so I would invite any, any input on that. And I'll, I can look at it, but I haven't seen, I haven't seen or looked at any other ordinances. I know that the model code is similar to what we have.
Mr. Drabinski.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we raise it to what? I don't know, 12 or 15. 15 does seem excessive, but I've got a ride-on, and if you hit something with the ride-on, it just explodes. So, and on these undeveloped lots, there's, you know, probably bits of metal, big chunks of dirt that are going to damage the contractor's equipment. And is that our fault or is that their fault?
Mr. Bitter.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if we could define undeveloped lots in this instance to mean three or more undeveloped continuous lots are subject to this standard, and then you get away from those infill lots that still would fall under the old standard.
I looked at that, and the problem is we have several instances where we have a single lot still. And what it does, that increases the cost to the contractor today to go in and do those lots. Is it possible? Of course it's possible. But to define it so that you have to have two or three lots in a row? But the question is, is it practical, you know, from a, from the cost perspective in order to accomplish what we want to accomplish, especially when we're not really getting complaints? We're just trying to make sure something conforms to what the city requirements are.
I understand that, but you're, you're not getting complaints, but you're getting complaints because people are still upset with McBrothers' division out there with their, I don't know what kind of grass they had there, but they didn't cut it all summer long. And everyone complained to me, but we never did anything with it out there. So people are going to complain. If you've got a single lot, I can guarantee you the two people that live on either side of that lot are complaining every time they're out there mowing their lawn. This is going to be, if we come up with a standard like this, it should help your contractor. Yes, he may have to come in and do those single lots more often. But after the first mowing in the summer, there isn't new construction material going out there. There aren't no, any new ruts being made unless people are driving off-road. So after the first mow, everything should be leveled to his mower.
Let me ask a question. Would you think something as high as nine inches, something? Or work on those lots between other lots?
No.
Okay.
There's a lot of mice in town. Not enough cats running around outside, although there are a lot of cats.
Just for clarification, I want to make sure I understood.
The only issue that I had with this thing is that we as the city have to hold ourselves to the same standards that we're going to hold the, any other contractor. So just because we own, you know, 30 of our own lots, we should have to follow our own rules. So I think we need to figure out something or we make them follow the ordinance.
Does Bill have anything to offer?
Is there some sort of program you can have to sell the lots at a cheaper discount?
Well, that's what we just talked about, wasn't it? And, you know, the two of them go together.
Mr. Helms.
Yes, thanks, Mr. President. Just sitting here thinking, is there, instead of going by the height, is there something we could do, say, in going by, maybe tell the contractor he's got to go mow those lots every two weeks or every three weeks or something? And go that route regardless, and because it depends on, of course, how much rain and whatever else we get on how those things are going to grow. So if we started it out at the normal height and then said, "Yeah, do it every two weeks or every three weeks or something," could we go along something like that instead of going with the height?
My recollection when talking with him is he does it every couple of weeks, as it is. And that's, that's the growth in a normal, normal wet season, normal wetness season. When it's drier, he doesn't have to go out as often. When it's wetter, he has to go out more often. And he knows that, and he goes out and does it that way.
Okay.
Could there be some kind of zoning overlay that could go to undeveloped lots? That wouldn't be an overlay on an infill lot? Is there any kind of zoning overlay that could be done?
I wouldn't put any zoning on there. Zoning is the land use regulation.
Yeah.
As opposed to design regulation. You're talking about a, what I'm thinking you're saying is, really gets to a nuisance-type regulation that would apply to certain lots?
Well, it would still be your R1 or whatever it is, but it could be an R1 subset this because it's completely undeveloped. So I mean, it would still carry its own zoning that it already has, but it would be, it could be identified as a subset of completely undeveloped area.
For example, there are areas like that right now around the golf course that are zoned residential that are, do not have any homes. They just abut the golf course.
Not even platted?
They're not platted to date. And the same grass limitations and weed limitations would apply to them. And they, they are there, but they're not, they don't have a separate subset or separate subclassification for zoning. Zoning gets to land use, not land maintenance.
So we're mowing the, the large open unplatted areas, same as we're mowing these?
No, we're not touching those.
Okay.
They're on the streets. I've never heard anybody say anything about those because they're away. Unless they can't find a golf ball.
Mike? Nancy, do you have anything to offer?
I think most people like the native prairie for those areas, but they don't like the native prairie if it's in the open lot next to your home.
Yeah.
Majority of our unplatted lots are in the floodway. And so those we aren't mowing specifically for that reason is that they're in shoreland. And we've also received some complaints from Soil and Water to not mow them or to not take down any of the, the, what do they call it? The landscaping, you know, they, they want the natural grass and things like that to grow up. The reason why we haven't done anything with, not Cooley View, McBrothers', is that they have some very specific, like hills that they've built and then valleys. And so we're trying to let those establish without the erosion. And then once they're built on, then if it's a natural grass, that's considered typical to landscaping or a type of flower. If not, I have a feeling that a majority of them are going to mow it. So that was kind of the agreement on that one. But the first year or two, that's, that's why the grass was grown. I visited with Jason about it, and that's going to continue to keep that more of a firm base, similar to what they have on the south end of East Grand Forks. But I have visited with Mr. Stouse, and he has periodically gone out and mowed that. The last thing I want to address is overlay districts. I don't want to get too specific into different types of nuisances or what you can and can't do in it, what types of trees, those types of things. Those are oftentimes called covenants. And it's not something that I want to get into enforcing where I'm looking at 17 different overlays or different neighborhoods that I'm trying to look, you know, determine which one's grass is six inches and which one's grass is 12 inches and which one can have chickens and which one can't, and so...
Great idea.
Yeah, so that's, that's why overlay districts are very good for uses and uses only, but not for...
Restrictions.
Restrictions, yes.
Just going to have to get a tape measure. You have time for that, right?
Believe me, I do spend, I spend enough time already driving around looking at lots that need to be mowed. We do have some infill ones that I do, that are undeveloped that I would be concerned if we allowed it to get to 12 inches because it does create quite a rodent problem in and around some very developed areas. So I guess my attitude is leave it all at six and we still treat it as a complaint basis. But I'm up for whatever you guys decide. Because I'm going to enforce it anyway, so whatever, whatever I'm enforcing is completely up to you, so.
I don't want to see infill lots at 12 or 15 inches. I just don't. That would be a bad outcome. So whatever we have to do to avoid that, let's avoid that.
So we'll be finding a new mowing. I mean, obviously, I mean, I think that it was clear he's not going to do the work for under six inches.
Is there any other wording, such as on these lots, as low as is practically possible? I mean, some wording like that, I mean, it sounds weird, but that's what you're really looking at. If you have a lot that you can't get lower than six inches, you can't get lower than six inches.
I would not want to be the attorney trying to defend a nebulous standard.
Uh-huh.
Perhaps Mr. Gallstedt is much more talented and can handle all those issues. But it's putting him into an impossible position if we don't have a definite standard.
But we're also putting the contractor in an impossible position if we tell them to mow to six inches and keep it there, and they can't get lower than six. Tomorrow, they're out of compliance. So that's the other side of this.
That's right. Just by ordinances, we have to have definitive standards. We can't just say what, you know, we'll, we'll decide if it's too tall. We're just, we just can't do that.
Paul, are they billing us by the hour or is it a lump sum for the year?
No, we get, we get two bills for half a season each time. And the bill that we get is somewhere between $4,000 and $4,500 for each half-year.
So it's a lump sum for the year?
It's a lump sum, they give us a lump sum for the year with two billings.
Okay, so if it rains a lot or it doesn't rain at all, it's all the same bill?
Yes. We've had years where it's rained a lot, and they've had to cut a lot. We've had years when it's been drier where it hasn't, and it just, it averages out over time.
Does it come over your budget?
Ah, it's 280 budget. The 280 accounts, so yes, kind of.
Yes, it is the 280 fund.
Which is EDA?
Yes, it's a housing fund. That's where we, you know, we had those incentives for a while. You know, we had the $10,000 incentive to start with. That's where the lot sales, for held-for-resale are in that fund. And then we do have, collect some income because we did reduce that incentive to 5,000. If they haven't lived there for 10 years, we get that back. So that's basically the only income we're getting in that fund is selling a lot or if they haven't made the 10-year window on that $5,000 incentive.
Property tax rebates come out of that too.
And property tax rebates come out of that.
So we could do a transfer from that fund or the street fund if the street has to start mowing it?
Yeah, I guess the other question, when you talk about height, I mean, I don't know what the rules are that we have for the diking system because that doesn't, that gets over six inches. So I don't know what, and I know what Jason says because of stability. And, and because of the weeds, weeds. But I mean, so we have that variation already in the city. I didn't want to bring up a can of worms, but somebody's going to recognize that in the community that they are not done. They're not kept at six inches.
I guess I'm back to, you know, looks like a duck, walks like a duck. There is a difference between completely undeveloped platted land and an infill lot. So is there a way in law to catch that difference and apply that different standard without mucking up the whole thing?
You're asking in law. I'm not the lawyer. I'm sorry. If I practice law, you put me in jail for doing that.
Figure something out.
You know, I think we've gotten input here that we want to make sure that infill lots are treated in a way that's respectful to the neighbors. We also recognize that we may have to do something where we have larger chunks of lots that are platted but not yet been built. lots that are platted but not yet built. So, we'll have to figure something out that does that, and I'm sure that Ron will not want to deal with it during the next week, so it'll be a couple of weeks before this comes back, and we'll just bring an ordinance or whatever kind of regulation we have to bring back to the city council at a council meeting.
Alrighty. Sounds good.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Anything else on that? If not?
No, I just want to remind you about the retreat on Thursday, the undergovernmental retreat that's on Thursday, starts at noon, and it's at the American Legion. And if you haven't made a reservation, you need to call the chamber.
Entertainer motions adjourned, please.
Move.
Move by Bitter, second by Larson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried, means adjourned.